Hi, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 14th, 2019, a regular meeting of Planning Commission. And it looks like we just have one agenda item tonight, so we're going to go straight to it. It's a presentation and discussion on economic cartography. And do you want me to just have, start with staff, Ann, and then you'll make the introduction?
What I was planning to do is just give you a very, very brief introduction and introduce you to the consultant.
Okay, go for it.
All right. Good evening. I'm Ann Feifield from the Community Development Division, and I am very pleased to be here this evening so that I can introduce you all to Joe Minicozy of Urban3. Joe. And as described in your agenda item summary, tonight's presentation is a follow-up to the mapping value work that staff completed in 2017. In that mapping value project, we created maps that showed taxable value on a per-acre basis, and that analysis helped to shed light on how our city's built environment affects tax revenue and our ability to pay for the services for our community. The obvious follow-up question to that analysis is, what about the costs? And so the city hired Urban3 to help us answer that question. And Joe Minicozy is here tonight to provide you with a summary of an analysis that his firm conducted for us on how infrastructure costs are distributed across the city. I also would like to introduce you to Josh McCarty, who works, is a colleague of Joe's over at Urban3. He's right there in the audience. Josh, raise your hand again. And Josh is the magic behind a lot of the maps and graphics that you'll see in your slide presentation tonight. Joe is planning on speaking for about 30 minutes, and then we'll open it up to question and answers, and he's available to go as in-depth as you would like to go in questions about the analysis they've conducted. So this is Joe Minicozy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Also, I'd like to point out that Josh is now an Oregonian. He moved to Portland back in January, midway through this project. So just a really quick, maybe, agenda of what we're going to do tonight. Introduce our company, who we are, what we do. Talk about the real estate productivity, what you get, cash flow, how that operates. And then go through and basically brush through what the staff has already done and kind of get you refreshed that information. But then how we unpack your data, what's unique to Oregon, all the different measures that affect your tax situation. But then get into the costing side. So once we go through the revenue, where your money comes from and why, but then how, where does it get distributed and spent? And that gets into the major infrastructure components of roads and pipes, basically. Those are the big-ticket items. But also looking at those as a time component. You have to refresh those infrastructures once you own them. The road gets rebuilt, the pipes get rebuilt, stuff like that. And then, once you have your revenues and your cost, you do your cost against your revenue to get your return on investment. The money that comes out of the properties, what goes back into the infrastructure. So this is going to be about 30 minutes. If you all don't know what we do as a company, we essentially are the intersection between land use, design, community design, and revenues. Our firm is basically an urban design company, but we specialize in the economic analysis, but also telling that story in a geospatial way. So how does it work spatially against the city and community's growth? Our roots are from a real estate development company, Julian Price, who actually spent some time here in Oregon back in the '70s. Julian moved to Asheville and developed, created a real estate development company called Public Interest Projects that, we're still in their office, but that's where I used to work. But we looked at the private sector side of how revenue operates. But really, what we started to see is that we were constantly in a conversation with our community about, what does it mean for you all? That in Asheville, North Carolina, when we're doing infill and fixing buildings, there really is a cooperative relationship between our community as a corporation and our city, our business as a corporation. So cities are incorporated. And if you just look up the word incorporated in the Oxford Dictionary, it says, "To constitute a company, a city, or other organization as a legal corporation." So there really is a cash flow to a city. It's not to say that it's a capitalistic corporation, but it's a corporation nonetheless. It's not just your city, it's your county, it's your state, it's our country. Joe Biden said this on the Stephen Colbert Show in 2016, and said that the United States is the largest corporation in the world. And I'm such a nerd at midnight, I'm looking it up. And here's the U.S. code, if anybody wants to look it up right there, that says that we are a federal corporation. So again, it's being mindful of the costs of how development patterns happen and understanding that cash flow in our corporation. So this gets back to the crops that we grow, the buildings, basically. And when a farmer looks at a farm field, the farmer's doing an analysis economically about cultivating crops. So, you know, like this building here that we helped renovate, so we had a ground store retail, second-floor office, upper stories residential. So the city invested in the streetscape and gave us a garbage can, a bike rack, two benches, and a street tree. So thank you, city, for that investment at our front door. We took this building from $300,000 of value and renovated it, and it became $11 million. So the taxes on that property shot up 3,500%. So that's what the community gets. That's the community's return on their investment in front of our property. So go out and buy 3,500% more garbage cans, we don't care. You know, we've grown our community's wealth. So do you all have a 401K plan that grows by 3,500%? Wouldn't you like that? This is how we can cultivate value. So people say to me, like, "Well, Joe, that's $11 million. We have this Walmart over here at $20 million." Fair enough. But that Walmart took 34 acres of my corporation to make it happen, right? That's the land it consumed to make a Walmart. Well, our building is just .2 acres. So the way that we look at real estate, we typically don't factor land into the efficiency of that development pattern. But if you did and said, "Okay, if we had an acre of our building or an acre of Walmart, this is the tax productivity difference of our building versus the Walmart and the taxes it pays and property taxes." Now, for you all in Oregon, this is where you stop. In North Carolina, we have retail taxes. So let's go ahead and measure that. We're paying two times the retail tax productivity versus a Walmart. Who would have thought that a furniture store and a tattoo parlor would be producing this much more retail taxes? But they do. Residents, we've got 90 units of residential per acre versus their zero, and we also have more jobs. So when you stack it up side by side and you look at the numbers in an apples-to-apples way, you can see how productive the urban environment is versus the stuff that typically happens in a community. So in Oregon, if you could grow something, what would you grow? You know, you go for the cash crop, right? This is a joke. Sometimes people say to me, they're like, "Joe, what's your problem? Do you hate Walmart?" And if that's what you're thinking, you're kind of missing the point. I actually presented at the International Association of Tax Assessing Officers Conference, which is probably the nerdiest conference I've ever been to. I don't know if you all hang out with assessors, but imagine 3,000 of them in one place. But this guy got up and presented data about Walmarts at 8:00 in the morning. He was showing spreadsheet after spreadsheet on how cheap Walmarts are. Think about that for a second. There are 3,000 assessors in the room. I'm in the back of the room drinking my coffee, saying, "This is brilliant. This guy's getting all of his property taxes lowered in one meeting. That's efficient." When you show how cheap your buildings are, the assessors are agnostic. If it's a cheap building, it's a cheap building, right? They can't make more value, it is what it is. So I went up to the microphone and I asked him, I said, "Mr. Terrell, what's the useful life of one of your buildings?" And he immediately shot back, "15 years. We'll be out of that building in 15 years, maybe 20. We designed the building to depreciate as fast as possible, build another building, start the depreciation cycle down again. We can maximize the depreciation. We build throwaway buildings." So that's their promise to your corporation. Their commitment is 15 years to your corporation. And I don't hate the player, but hate the game. Understand that they have figured out their financial advantage and their model, but it's based on your public policies. But this is your community. Do you want more than a 15-year commitment of investment in your community? So 15 years is a life cycle of a cat. We leased more in the passing of a cat. Do you want something more? I'm a dog person, sorry. Do you want something longer than that as a community investment into your portfolio? So if I can map your brain and show you what's going on inside your brain and show you that data of what's going on in your brain, can we do an economic MRI on your city? So back to Asheville real quick. This is my county, 350 square miles. I have non-taxable up here. This is Mount Mitchell Forest. Here's Mount Pisgah Forest down here. So these are two federal parks. The Blue Ridge Parkway comes through town. I have low value in green, so this is all green stuff up here. And this big purple splotch is the Biltmore Estate that's worth over $100 million of value. Now, it's really not fair, because the Biltmore Estate is 200,000-square-foot house on 2,000 acres of land. That's a really big house on a really big property. So it's like the biggest value because it's the biggest thing. That's not a fair comparison. So rather than total value, let's do value per acre. The map just changed, and I'll just show it to you in 3D. Can you all guess where downtown Asheville is? Boom, right there. So we can see that our whole county, we're all paying six mils in county taxes. So if you just laid a six-mil-thick blanket across this model, where's the county getting all of its taxes? So in defense of my brothers and sisters who live out here in Fairview, they think they're paying a lot of taxes compared to their friends who live further out, which is true. But they have no clue what we're paying in downtown in county taxes. So a lot of this is getting people to see that what's good for the downtown is great for the city, but it's also unbelievable for the county. We all can grow our wealth together, but we have to be able to see it. So that's why we make these models. So, excuse me. I've been to Eugene before. You all have seen, perhaps, some of you have seen the presentation I did in 2014. And your staff has actually gone through and taken the initiative to do this similar mapping. So they've produced a report, this has all been distributed to you all. You know, thinking about how you sell or buy bananas, you buy them, you're going to measure banana bunches by the pound, right? To make it apples-to-apples. And so you all did the taxable value. Here's your total taxable value of single-family, the coffee kiosk, the downtown building, or the big box. And you can see how it's, if you looked at it as a total, it would be very productive. But when you do it on a per-acre basis, here's total and here's per acre. So all of a sudden, the numbers shift, right? All of a sudden, you see the potency of the downtown building versus the big box. And a very similar analysis, similar data here in your own community. So the numbers prove itself with that same type of analytic. Incidentally, the per-acre analysis was very common in city economics back in the 1930s. For some reason, we just stopped doing that. But if you look at literature from the '20s and '30s, this was a pretty common comparison. Now, what's pretty cool is what your staff did is basically, another way of looking at it, is if you have one big-box store, how many downtown buildings would it take to fill the same land area of the big-box store? And then what would you yield in value? Which is another awesome way of looking at it. So if you're to look at that sacred land that you have, you have a boundary around your community, that land is critically important. You have to think about every square inch of how it operates and think of that cost-benefit analysis of it. So here's your model. This is what the staff did. And again, you see the same reflection in that model. You can tell where downtown is in the model, as well as, the university's a big hole right here because it's non-taxable, but you see value on the other side of that neighborhood center on the other side of the campus, and you can see its potency. Now, in your mind's eye, as you travel to those places, you realize these aren't skyscrapers over there, it's the density that produces that value. So, okay, that's the revenue side, where you get your money. What about the costing side, the physical stuff? And following along your council's goals, you're talking about a long-term sustainable budget, how do you pay for these things over time? You're talking about where your revenue sources come from and what you can do, but also being transparent about the information. What we find in these three-dimensional models is this direct data transparency. It's a way to make the information equitable, that everybody can see a picture of the data that's going on. So back to your revenue. First of all, Josh had to update all of your model up to today's numbers. We went ahead and grabbed the county while we're at it. And your county has a lot of non-taxable land within it, at about 60%. But you can clearly see Eugene floating in the center of all of this. And you can even make out downtown popping out right here. It's like a little mountain right there. So that's the potency across the whole county, a very, very potent city inside Lane County. Your city's urban growth boundary, this is your urban growth boundary territory, and here's the land that's currently within the city's control. And again, you can see the potency of downtown within it. So the goal of this project was to break your city down into a series of bite-sized pieces. Can we look at different building types, the ingredients that make up your city? And so you have residential product or buildings in your community, from low density to high density across the model, low, medium, and high. You have mixed-use buildings in a low density, a medium density, and a high density. And we have commercial stuff, low, medium, high. So this is, we're going to go through a lot of information, but at the end of the day, I want you to think, what are the types of these buildings and how do we think about them simply as a menu item? We call this the Brady Bunch slide, by the way. It's just a real simple nine-grid analysis. Now, first of all, what's kind of fun is going through your measures and the tax distortions that you all have, which is kind of wild, but you're not alone. The state of California adopted Prop 13 in the 1970s, and like wildfire, it spread across the country. You all did something a little different, a little more quirky, but we had to slice our way through that information. So I'll give you an easy way of understanding it. So this is an analysis that Josh pulled, just taking this one property here, which I believe is the Chamber of Commerce. But you see three numbers. You see 1.5 million, 800,000, and 596. At the end of the day, the only number that matters is that bottom one, the 596, because that's what you pay taxes on. So you have a real market value, gets knocked down to an assessed value, but at the end of the day, it's what's that taxable number is that's what's important. So all of your measures affect those three numbers to get to that root number. Now, what's fascinating, though, however, is this is a chart of how the real market value looks on that property versus the other two numbers. Now, what's critically important about this graph is this gap right there. And you notice how it lifts up the difference, right? So as the market takes off, what happens? Well, as the market takes off, other factors of the market take off with it. The cost of labor, the cost of concrete, the cost of steel, the cost of lumber, all of that fluctuates with the real market situation. But your city is constrained to that lower bar. So as much as you want to pay your firefighters more, give them a raise, you're not getting more revenue to compensate for that. On top of that, you're dealing with costs of a bike rack or whatever that's going up in the marketplace. So this is one of the weird things that happens in the Oregon system. It sounds great to suppress your tax bill as a voter, but there's a ramification inside your corporation of how you can pay for yourself. So just be aware of that. And that's something that, again, this is something that's across the whole entire state. This is something every Oregon city has to deal with. So when you look at your models as a real market value on the left, or an assessed market value, or assessed value, and then the taxable value, this is the model that you're essentially paying taxes on. So you all have given yourself, through the measures, a discount of about $11 billion. What that represents to your city councils, they've just lost $30 million in their budget to work with from a taxable value standpoint. So it takes the ability to afford this corporation that you're paying for, throw $30 million out the window for your general fund budget. That's what happened by passing the measures. But it's something you can't affect right now, but it's something to be mindful of that your city council has to deal with. So the costs, infrastructure, the road infrastructure is the big-ticket item. Just focusing on that for a second, you currently take out bonds to pay for those roads. So this is just a breakdown of those bonds. What's interesting about the bonds is they essentially recycle and flip. You have to keep on paying for these roads, and you're paying for them with the bond money. But this is where we had to start, from a financial standpoint, to pay for the roads. Your roads, however, are a fixed object that you have to pay for. So in orange is the, and this is from 1900 till today, orange is the amount of arterial roads, so you can see the amount of volume of that. But you start to see what happens right about here. After World War II, you start flipping to a higher density of yellow stuff. The yellow stuff are all the local roads. That's what your city has to pay for. So you see a volumetric shift there. Or another way of looking at it is here, you can clearly see that flip to go from regional roads. You essentially had a regional system in the county for a long time. Most of those roads were dirt. But eventually, after World War II, what happened is you started building a web between all of those arterials, which became your networks for your city. That's the stuff you have to constantly pay for. That's the roads that you all own. So this is just animating the model. Josh put this together so you can see how you, you had regional roads, but you kept your city pretty tight in time. But you can see the value that you built in your city. Right about here at World War II, this is when the flip happens. And you can see how you start to spread your butter really thinly over the landscape. So you're getting a lot of housing stock, but it's not giving you a high level of potency compared to that urban stock in your center, right? So this is a way to just kind of see your city with different eyes. So just taking a series of snapshots in time, just looking at these different years, and then looking at the amount of linear miles that you have under those periods, you see this huge jump from 1936 to 1970 in the volume of roads that you took down. And back in time, we weren't thinking about what's going to happen when these roads have to get rebuilt. It was more like, this is how we grow. This is America, this is what we're doing. We've shifted into a modern era, and we took down different infrastructure. We did a project with Chuck Marone from Strong Towns in Lafayette, Louisiana. And one of the epiphanies for us is we sat down with the finance officer, and the finance standards, the Government Finance Officers Association, has this thing called the CAFR, which is our finance rules. And they list asphalt roads as an asset. And we sat down with the finance officer, and we said to Lori, we said, "Lori, look, my computer's an asset. This computer, I could sell it to you, right? If I had a fleet of vehicles doing deliveries, that fleet would be an asset. If I had real estate, if I had like a fast-food joint or a coffee kiosk, that's an asset. I can sell all of those assets to you. Can you pick your roads up and can you sell them in Baton Rouge?" And she goes, "Well, no." And Chuck Marone goes, "That's a liability." And she said, "But our CAFR standards..." We said, "We're not going to pay attention to your CAFR standards. We're going to flow your cash how you actually function." And this is one of the critical points of municipal finance that makes it difficult for your city council to see the losses, because they're following standards of practice. But that standard of practice is a little bit of a smokescreen of what's really going on financially. So there are critical roads, there are things like bridges that are super expensive. And what I'm going through now is like, how do you flush the money through your system? Who pays for what? Well, you know who can cross a bridge. You know that people on the other side of the bridge are driving across that bridge, so we can measure that. That's the big stuff, the critical roads. Then you have your not-so-critical stuff. These are like the, we call them network danglers, your dead ends, your cul-de-sacs. Yet these are in your public portfolio. So why is it that 9% of your system, the public is paying for? So something like this little cul-de-sac right here, you've got seven folks that live on that, yet the public is paying for that? Which is, one of our biases in the model is that's patently unfair to the whole entire community. At the very least, that, those seven folks should cover the cost of that cul-de-sac. You know, or just be mindful that 9% of your system of asset, right, or of liability, is in those cul-de-sacs. That's not part of a network. Those are danglers, right? When you look at all of your roads, this is, in talking with your staff, they wanted to see a map. This is a really cool map. What did you have in your system before 1950 and after 1950? And what's fascinating is, you built 78% of your system since 1950 of volume. Now, we looked at your population against that. And what's interesting is that your population's in green and your road mileage is in black. You're starting to close the gap, you're not building as many roads anymore. But if you look at that gap distance, it's actually greater than where you were in 1960. So as many strides as you're making of densifying, you're still less dense than you were in 1960. And this is something that was pretty crazy to see in the data, but that's the truth of the information. Now, taking your roads and looking them over time, this is when you all built all your roads, every linear mile per year, basically, or cluster per year. So you're sitting out here in 2019, and you're not building new roads. But really, what you're doing is you're building roads 1979. These roads have to be rebuilt, right? So the roads that you're rebuilding are 1979 roads. So there's a whole, if you take this whole system and do the rebuild cycle, this is what it looks like. Some of your roads that you're paying for in this cycle are actually built in 1939, they got rebuilt in 1979, and you're rebuilding them again in the second rebuild. So there's a second rebuild cycle that you have to pay for. Once those roads go down, they don't disappear, they keep on coming back, haunting your city council for new capital funds. You're about to go into a third rebuild cycle, and this is where it's going to start to get scary. Josh and I were actually in the library today, and there's a great flow chart, some city made infographic, about what's going to happen in 2022, where you're going to start to see a financial drop in your ability to pay for things. You're going to be walking into that cycle and running around the same period. So, you know, our thesis is, if you can't measure this stuff, you can't manage it. Stick with the things that you can measure first and start to figure out how to cash flow that. Infrastructures and pipes. This is just a diagram of breaking down your stormwater system. At the end of the day, the stormwater system cares about impervious surface. This building is impervious surface. That street over there is impervious surface. Now, one of the things to bear in mind is that not all impervious surface is created equal. You charge an impervious surface fee, but some of those impervious surfaces, like a building, this is a shot of Cleveland, by the way, but that building right there pays more taxes than that surface parking lot, yet inside the stormwater system, the stormwater system sees them as equal. And that's something to bear in mind, is that some stuff can be more potent for your community. Be aware of the costs and the fees that are adjacent to that. So when you look at just the stormwater system, this is just the volume of stormwater. The mall is incredibly, it replaces incredible amount of cubic volume of stormwater. It's pretty much 100% impervious. Well, so are those buildings downtown, but it's so much less volume of water coming out of those downtown buildings than that mall, because that mall's sheet-flowing a bigger area of impervious surface. But let's not forget this stuff, the roads. So does the city pay a bill for the roads that are out in that system? The answer is no. So you all have to pay for all of those roads' impervious sheet flow, and it's a tremendous amount. So taking your entire road volume area and gluing all the roads together, you have about 3.3 square miles of roads inside your system. So that's, Josh made a big parking lot, basically, so you could see what 3.3 square miles looks like next to your city. That's an incredible volume of water that gets sheet-flowed into the system that currently is equally distributed through the whole system and not based on mileage, right? Because if I'm further out in the system, don't I need more roads to get me to my house? Yet I'm not paying different from somebody that's closer in. Now, just look at that 3.3 square miles. What's crazy is Josh put the roads on the map. You essentially have enough road to go from Eugene to San Francisco. That's what you own. That's a lot of miles of road. Incidentally, it's not the most that we've seen, but it's still pretty significant. That's what you own. So just floating that parking lot over your city, what's the name of the movie? Independence Day style, so you can see what it looks like and how much of your city it covers. It's a pretty sizable chunk of surface. So just looking to get scary. Josh and I were actually in the library today and there's a great flow chart some city made infographic about what's going to happen in 2022, where you're going to start to see a financial drop in your ability to pay for things. You're going to be walking into that cycle and running around the same period. So, you know, our thesis is if you can't measure this stuff, you can't manage it. Stick with the things that you can measure first and start to figure out how to cash flow that. Infrastructures and pipes. This is just a diagram of breaking down your stormwater system. At the end of the day, the stormwater system cares about impervious surface. This building is impervious surface. That street over there is impervious surface. Now, one of the things that to bear in mind is that not all impervious surface is created equal. You charge an impervious surface fee, but some of those impervious surfaces, like a building, this is a shot of Cleveland by the way, but that building right there pays more taxes than that surface parking lot. Yet inside the stormwater system, the stormwater system sees them as equal. And that's something to bear in mind is that some stuff can be more potent for your community. Be aware of the costs and the fees that are adjacent to that. So when you look at just the stormwater system, this is just the volume of stormwater. The mall is incredibly, it places incredible amount of cubic volume of stormwater. It's pretty much 100% impervious. Well, so are those buildings downtown, but it's so much less volume of water coming out of those downtown buildings than that mall. Because that mall's sheet flowing a bigger area of impervious surface. But let's not forget this stuff, the roads. So does the city pay a bill for the roads that are out in that system? The answer is no. So you all have to pay for all of those roads, impervious sheet flow. And it's a tremendous amount. So taking your entire road volume area and gluing all the roads together, you have about 3.3 square miles of roads inside your system. So that's, Josh made a big parking lot, basically. So you could see what 3.3 square miles looks like next to your city. That's an incredible volume of water that gets sheet flowed into the system that currently is equally distributed through the whole system and not based on mileage, right? Because if I'm further out in the system, don't I need more roads to get me to my house? Yet I'm not paying different from somebody that's closer in. Now, just look at that 3.3 square miles. What's crazy is Josh put the roads on the map. You essentially have enough road to go from Eugene to San Francisco. That's what you own. That's a lot of miles of road. Incidentally, it's not the most that we've seen, but it's still pretty significant. That's what you own. So just floating that parking lot over your city, what's the name of the movie? Independence Day style. So you can see what it looks like and how much of your city it'd cover. It's a pretty sizable chunk of surface. So just looking at, under the same x-ray vision of just seeing your city as impervious surface, here's the parking lots and the bus station area that's basically asphalt in your downtown. Here's your buildings. And so this is a weight of like x-ray specs of just turning on a certain vision of seeing your city this way. And then you can see it compared to the mall and how much of that is impervious surface as one monolithic slab, basically. There are tremendous amounts of area. So the cash flow of this, when you look at buildings and parking, they're both paying taxes, right? So if I have a surface parking lot in a building, the parking lot is worth something. So this is, these are actually your numbers. You have about 915 square feet of building per person in Eugene and you have about 450 square feet of parking per person. You have about one and a third parking spaces per person in Eugene, spread across the city. When you look at the numbers, a building's about 66 bucks a square foot of value. The parking is pulling about $9 a square foot of value. Your cost of road however, is costing you 24 bucks per square foot to fix a road. So let me ask you a question. Do y'all remember the public meeting where we gave parking, what is that, a seven times discount in value? Do you remember that meeting where you said, we're going to give parking a subsidy? No. But that's baked into the tax system. Because the cost of that road's going to cost you the same in front of the building as it cost you in front of the parking, yet your parking is paying one-seventh the taxes. When you tax on value and you put less value on the parking, that's a subsidy. So from our perspective, we're like, look, we don't care if you want that or not. Just be mindful that you're writing it down and having a public conversation about that. Or worse, when you have baked in your zoning code, a mandate for parking, you're essentially mandating in a subsidy. So just be aware of that. So looking at your city again, through those x-ray specs of buildings, parking and roads, and let's get back to what you control right now, which is this land area. Taking your area of your city and making it a box, so taking this, this is your footprint of your city. This is what you're controlling is just, let's, an abstract box, right? So when you look at your buildings, you're about that much square foot. Here's parking and here's roads. So from a valuation, or from a size and valuation standpoint, you're about, let's call it a, what is that, like $2 billion of value per square mile of building. Your parking is about 245 million per square mile. So that's where you start to see the discount in the valuation. Here's the cost. You have about a, let's call it a $600 million square mile liability of roads. And then this is everything else. What's interesting in the context of volume, particularly when it comes to stormwater, you're paying $445 million in cost of stormwater system. What if you were to take under your charge, let's find a way to shrink our city a little bit. Let's shrink that impervious surface. Maybe we try to get more multi-story buildings. Maybe we don't build as much road. If you just cut your building and road and parking liability in half, what does that do to that $450 million? It cuts that in half too. So you can actually be more efficient and look at ways of saving some of your costs by looking at the way that your land use patterns are designed and how you make a policy around that. So this is all spatial analysis. This is all the way that we see the world is all geospatial. If you can see data, if you can see what the infrastructure is, there is a spatial relationship to your city. Real simple one is your wastewater. This is your wastewater maps. The pink dots are your lift stations. So everybody inside the city is paying the same per gallon wastewater charge. Yet geospatially, you see that one neighborhood up here has 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 lift stations inside that district. So why aren't they paying for those within their district? Why is that a community's issue that y'all are picking up the cost of that inside the system? So just be geospatial about it. That fee should be borne inside that district. That fee needs to be sent back to that community to pay for that. So just be aware of that. As you build on the landscape, there is a financial effect to all of this. Even pipe length. This is a map of pipe length per district. You see some of them are denser, which means they've got a lot more miles of pipe per person in that district. So let's just break it down for a second. Here's downtown and then here's two sub-districts. So we have the downtown central district number 23 here and 44. So these are pretty close to downtown. But when you look at their numbers, what's kind of crazy is, one is double the dwelling units inside the district and also a lot less feet of pipe, about half the feet of pipe. So you're getting more people on less pipe, right? It's about a quarter of feet of pipe per person. If you're putting more people on less stuff, it's more efficient, right? So when you look at the cost, the tax value, you're absolutely getting more value out of that neighborhood as well. So at the end of the day, the number that really matters is the bottom line. The cost of replacing that service is one-half the cost of replacing that service on double the amount of people. That's efficiency. So when you look at, okay, Joe, look, we don't want to be so close together. I don't like density that much. Well, when you say that publicly, you're essentially asking for a subsidy to be baked into the system. There's a cost to that. We all as a community have to pick that up. And you just want to make sure that you're balancing that number and keeping, being mindful of that. So back to the streets. This is your model floating in a lake, zooming in for a second. This is the revenue that comes out of different properties here. And then Josh sent a bill for those major points of infrastructure, right? So if we know what you're paying in taxes here and we know what it's costing for your area, we can net your cost against your revenue to see what's in the black and what's in the red, right? Any business, you do this. You want to see that your revenues exceed your expenses. It's real simple. And this is the cash flow model. Here it is in 3D. So you can see where you're not positive and where you're not negative. This is the bird's eye view. If you just hold the model and kind of flip it upside down and look at the worm's eye view, this is what it looks like. And you can see it's all, it's not massive amounts of big cuts, but it's a lot of tiny cuts. It's all this accrual of a lot of little costs. So back to the building types for a second. So residential, on average, you're losing about $1,400 an acre for your single-family product. That's the cost of that subsidy to that single-family housing. And again, that's averaged on a per acre. As you get more dense, you start to go more positive. And then higher density, you're more in the black. When you get into your commercial product, you're starting in the black. It's a lower density stuff, medium density and higher density. Incidentally, that middle one you know is a building about 100 years old too. So it's produced that revenue wealth for over a century, or about a century. Your commercial stuff at low density is about $500 an acre. Now, mind you, this is just for the physical stuff. Once you add the police services in, that's when that one turns red. A typical Walmart produces, consumes more in police services than it pays in property taxes. And then here's medium density and high density. So these are your numbers as a Brady Bunch set, so that you can just see it as a really simple abstract pull from that three-dimensional model that we showed you. So as far as our takeaways, back to your goals, this is a way to visually be transparent about your cash flow with your community and let people see what's going on financially. So it helps with that transparency. It helps you understand the, your revenue and what's going on and also what you can afford over time. Your pipes, just taking your road fees and a road system revenues and flushing them through the system, starting at the center of town, at the oldest roads and flushing your money through the system. Yellow is the stuff that you currently can't afford as a cash flow. So you can afford about 70% of your road system as is, which means that you run out of money in mendicino, if you're to think of it that way. This is, this is what your staff is dealing with to pay for your city and how your council is making decisions based on the bonds and stuff like that. It's not all, I don't mean to sound like doom and gloom in any of this stuff. You actually are doing great. We just happen to be working with Lancaster, California. And what's interesting here is, check this out. They're about the same population y'all are. And we tuned your model to their color histogram. So look at how much downtown they have versus what you would have under the same revenue thing. So there's like so much more of your city is so much more potent than anything they have. What's also crazy is even though they're the same population, they have double the land area and double the feet per capita of people. So they own more land to manage and they have more infrastructure. They're in some serious, serious shape. They also have a lot less value at the top of their model. So their purple spike is half the height of your mountain. And their total value of their city is about half of your city's total valuation, or about one and a half, sorry, total year valuation, which is, they're in a really serious spot, basically. You all have actually good tools that you've already started. You have a, the irony is, is turn around and flip the script here. In Lancaster, we're actually showing them this map that you all have and saying, this is a great idea, where you have a fee reduction zone. In their case, we're recommending a transportation utility fee. I know that you all have had this conversation before, but basically, how do you treat your roads like a utility and isolate them out of the general fund and charge a revenue side of that? That's actually, we still haven't figured out if that's legal in California. We're working with them. It might be a state constitutional issue, but in your state, you're allowed to do it. Back to your growth boundary, one of the conversations with staff and what you all have that we don't have in Asheville is a growth boundary. And there's conversations about you all expanding it. From our perspective, again, back to spatial analysis, our first question is, well, how do you use what you use? What are you doing with your current land before you expand the boundary? So about 20% is not taxable and we're not suggesting build in that. That's stuff that's sacred, like a park or a school or city hall. But you have taxable used land and you're only about 2% vacant, which when you look at that number in itself, that's where you start to say, look, Joe, we're running out of land, right? But hold on a second. What if we ask the data, where do you have in your city where the dirt is worth more than the building that's sitting on top of it, right? That's the first test of economic analysis, which is, is it blighted? Or is it underutilized? Or is there, the dirt should be built upon because it's currently being speculated, basically? That's about 16% of your city. So that's showing us that you actually have a lot of land that you could focus on for that infill, for that redevelopment. When you look at the numbers of that, oh, sorry, you do have a lot of it even in your downtown. So what's happening in your downtown is you might have a parking crisis and it's easier for me to sit on that land and just charge rent in parking that supersedes my cost to you all as a tax bill. Yet that could be an opportunity for redevelopment. So be mindful of that. Talk to your folks in the downtown about that and see if there's a way to be more efficient even in the core area. Because that's where your, that's where your best product is, that's your purple spikes that come out of that. Cultivate more of that. But this is the problem. When you have a vacant building, when you have a vacant piece of land, that is bleeding you slowly. This is a vacant piece of land, it's got two fire hydrants right there. You've already made that investment into that infrastructure and yet they're paying very low taxes because there's nothing on it. So the assessor puts no value on that property or low value, right? So that's costing you about $2,000 an acre of vacant land. Back to the land analysis, be mindful of how you build. What if you had a higher density of buildings or more volume that would yield more wealth? Basically grow your city up some. When we drive around cities, we're constantly looking at how many one-story buildings versus two-story buildings. And it's amazing how much land we wasted with one-story buildings. And we just spread ourselves out horizontally. Well, that makes more infrastructure. So you have about 80% of your city is single-family product. So let that wash over you for a second. You know now the costs, you know the ROI on this stuff, you know how we've subsidized that land use. And it's not just you all. This is across America. We've subsidized that product since World War II. And yet it's incredibly consumptive from a city's perspective. And I'm not saying stop, people shouldn't live in single-family houses, but you need to be mindful of the balance of that. So I was joking with the staff. I said, you know, today I was, we were having a night meeting and I was getting a little edgy. And I said, you know, we've got to end this meeting. I had a cheeseburger today and so tonight I need to do a night ride and go for a mountain bike ride so I can burn off the cheeseburger and tomorrow I'll eat a salad, right? I do this with myself. I need to keep balance. So be mindful of those land uses in your city, that you have 80% of a system and you need to have a community conversation about whether or not you can carry that cheeseburger anymore. You know, there's going to be a desire to have that because we've incentivized it financially, but be mindful about what you all can afford to balance. So look at this model with new eyes and say to yourself, are there lessons that we can learn from this to cultivate wealth? And just a real simple analysis, you see this out here in Crescent Village, you see that little baby mountain out there, right? So why not have that replicated here, here, here and here? I just arbitrarily chose some spots. But just, why don't you have a bunch of satellites floating outside of the sun, you know, that have that? You still build up your downtown, but you can have neighborhood centers out in the neighborhood that cultivate that wealth as well. So looking at the side view of the model, you've got your downtown and let's just say you do half of what's on the other side of the campus, but you replicate that out here, here and here. This is how you can specify areas of redevelopment and small amounts of growth in your community. So just to close, our perspective is we're geoaccountants. You know, we're going to take your money and your data and put it on a map. So when you talk to your accountant, your accountant doesn't care if you buy a boat, right? Your accountant cares if you can afford a boat. This isn't about making a judgment call in your community. We're here to give you data and allow you to go forward with that information. But we do care whether or not you can afford your own community. So we put your numbers on a map. Thanks for having us do that. This is a lot of fun for us. We're nerds and thanks. Was that too nerdy or something? Questions?
I got a bunch, but.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I had to breathe there.
You want me to start?
Are we ready for questions? Are you ready? Okay, great. So I have Commissioner Brofsky.
Yeah, I'll probably need a couple of cues.
So why don't we, why don't we do a round, why don't you start with one and then we'll go around and if other people, let's start that way and then.
Well, go around that way and I'll go last. Because some of my questions might get answered.
Okay. Are there others? Because if there aren't others, you could go for it. Okay, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you. It was really an excellent presentation. There are a couple of areas though, I was wondering whether it would be useful to track, so we get a better balance on what the numbers really are. And that would be, so if we had an accounting for, say there are urban renewal spending in the core district since 1970, so we know how much of a subsidy might have been put on that area to balance the revenues that are getting there. So we see that. And another example would be, two other examples would be, I live in an area probably your east downtown that was a high density, Western University neighborhood, but it also may be responsible for the third of the police calls in the city. So I mean, they have the, the level of policing that's required because of the population and.
Yep.
And then a third example would be utilities, like electricity and networking. For example, we have undergrounded utilities in the downtown area which, and rebuilt the sidewalks, which makes it more attractive for development. And we have a fiber network down there that's heavily subsidized. Well, it's really the only place in the city that is attached to the citywide fiber network. So there are some costs associated with that that would be useful to have, to look at it as well as just the regular.
Oh, sure. Yeah. But from a utility standpoint, do those utilities go to the city's bottom line? Is that, or is that the utility that covers that?
It's a city-owned, municipally-owned utility. So the costs of the system are shared by everybody who uses energy or water.
Exactly. So that's, along that lines, God, I'd hate to use the Lafayette example, but I'm gonna. We did the model in Lafayette. One of the questions that we asked them is they had a coal burning power plant in Lafayette, Louisiana. And we, I mean, what was it, Josh? It was like $700 million a year they spend to burn coal in Lafayette, Louisiana, where they have oil coming out of the ground down there.[1736.45] And it was kind of fascinating that, first of all, they weren't even considering that cost, but secondly, they weren't thinking geospatially. And the utility was outrunning wires out in the middle of farm fields and expanding the infrastructure because they wanted to get more users. So we had them sit down with the Public Works Department, and the Public Works Department, we asked them, we said, can you afford the roads? And they said, no, we're upside down with the roads, we can't afford them. And we said that right in front of the utility people, because they're motivated to get more users, and they weren't necessarily seeing that those, creating more lines means creating more roads that follow those lines, which creates more liability for the city. So I would take, I think our lesson here would be, yes, take the utility system and do a very similar analytic geospatially. From a police standpoint, that police question, that's a little bit more tricky. We typically stay out of the police department because it could lead to, you know, I'll be honest, you know, we're from the South, and we have neighborhoods that are arguably overpoliced. And you would talk to folks inside those neighborhoods, and they don't want the service the way that we deliver it in those communities. So we typically don't get into that. You could get geospatial with the police department calls. You know, here, you'd probably argue, well, Joe, there's a lot of college students there, it gets a little crazy, we have to have the police calls. Well, then, yeah, you should, you should worry about that. Having that dialogue with the university is kind of a little complicated. There is something called a pilot that a lot of colleges are used to, payment in lieu of taxes. I can send you a brief on this. In Boston, they charge all the universities, mostly by a little bit of arm twisting and a whole lot of guilt, an additional fee from the university because they're non-tax-paying entities. Yet, you all get to pick up the police services when a student gets a little too rowdy, you know? And that's something to be, maybe a conversation you could have. But yes, you will, you will find the area around the university will have more police calls because of that, or where the students live and, and stuff like that. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, except the other one would be urban renewal and how much spending was concentrated, subsidies were.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the urban renewal numbers. We didn't dig into that, but that would be something to see whether or not you got your return on investment on that, and whether or not that, that made sense. There's good urban renewal and bad urban renewal in how it happened. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, we didn't, we didn't analyze it specifically. We were mostly looking at the big-ticket items. And think of it as your, you know, your couch purchase versus a lamp. You know, when you look at your roads and pipes in context, and put the future cost of replacement, or if there was a reserve account, imagine I'm, I have a building and we put an air conditioner on the roof. I know that that air conditioner is going to cost me $20,000 10 years from now when I have to replace it. So I squirrel away a little piece of rent every month that, 10 years from now, I can replace that air conditioner. That's basically what we did with your roads. What if you took your roads and your pipes and built in a reserve account? What would it cost you all as a cash flow to build that reserve account, to be able to afford that infrastructure in the future? And when you do that, you see the real expense of those roads and pipes versus any other kind of investment. It just dwarfs everything.
Thank you. Next person, Commissioner Ray.
So this is, this one here, is this net positive, net negative? If you plotted that, is the city broke across the board, or did you make it so it balanced?
No, this is just how you actually are. We're not trying to balance anything. This is mostly to give you that.
Okay.
And you are technically kind of broke, yeah.
Broke, okay. So broke is the answer.
Yeah.
If you average it all together, and then over time, do we get broker, or is it a constant?
Depends on the development pattern.
How, how'd you?
Well, you were talking about renewing roads, for example. So did you plot any of this over time?
We haven't, well, this, this is taking that, taking that system of what you have, snapping you down in time and saying, this is what you got.
Snap shot.
And how does it cash flow?
Got it.
I think maybe the best chart to see is the, is the bar chart.
Yeah.
So again, this is saying you don't build another road from here to infinity. Now, what's kind of, I mean, aside from being a cool nerdy bar chart, the other thing to pay attention to is see the mass of that, right? That really happens right here, right? So this grows, you get this little mountain, and it repeats itself, repeats itself, repeats itself, right?
Right.
So you can see how it's like an exponential growth. You've got a, this thing is under its own steam now, rolling downhill. There's nothing you can do to stop that other than unplug roads, let some revert to dirt. I mean, that's the way you could do. But at least be mindful of the fact that the system is already, you're carrying that weight. So if you, if you're currently having to go out and take down loans to pay for this, you might want a different cash flow model, because you're just going to have to take out more loans in the future. This is like getting a mortgage on your house to buy your house, and then when your mortgage is done, you have to go out and take out another mortgage to pay for your house. We wouldn't do this with our housing, would we? You know, we'd buy a house that we can afford. But the way that the American city has grown, no one penciled this stuff out into the future when we got onto this habit after World War II. The American city was much more compact, we had a whole lot less single-family housing.
But if you weren't building more roads, this system, you could flatten it, right?
Yeah.
Can you go to the, how many roads can you afford slide?
Yeah.
I think this'll, this'll help some, too. Basically, you can afford out of pocket right now something like two-thirds or three-quarters of your system. So you, you can't quite cover it with the resources you have, which is why you have to bond it out. And what's going on is, if you continue to perpetuate the building pattern that you have, that's just going to expand a little over time. So what we want to encourage is, is how do you change the trajectory? And that's, that's the one you want in the last 10, 15 years, the, you know, the.
That's the idea of the urban growth boundary, though. At some point, you have your infrastructure if you're within that boundary. And so you're, you're flattening that. You're not growing like World War II peak after that, right?
That's, that's, that's the idea.
That's the idea.
Yes, yeah.
Well, actually, since, since you brought that up, well, there's a couple of things to look at. When we hear about things like MPT, or in other cities, we call it TIF, Tax Increment Finance, what that is, is a very active way of looking at the financial model and finding a way to balance the subsidies that are already in place. Put real simply, the more expensive the building you build, the higher the taxes. So again, don't hate the player, hate the game, that Walmart is building a $50 square foot tilt-up box. It's a cheap building. So there's an incentive for me, if you're not charging me for the infrastructure to go out at the end of the system, I'm not paying for that whole pipe that gets me out there, a road. And if you just rethink the, the financial system, you'd see that subsidy that goes to that house further out. And just, it's not to say that that's wrong, it's just to be mindful of it. So one of the things that we looked at with your annexation of land is that, here's a chart of, in blue is the land that you've developed versus your growth boundary. So you see this, this is what you consumed, is a city where all of your buildings are, your land that's developed, and this is your growth boundary. You saw this rapid growth after World War II in your city. And then what happened statewide, or here, you expanded your growth boundary. You basically built a bigger donut around the land that you consumed, but your donut keeps on getting bigger, right? In 1972, the state adopted growth boundaries, and y'all adopted yours in 1982. So this was one of the analytics, we just looked, you know, we're like poking around at all of your numbers. One of the things that's kind of fascinating is you kept growing again. So you didn't, in North Carolina, Chapel Hill's the only city that has a growth boundary. They haven't moved it since 1972, but you keep on moving the goalpost, right? So is it really helping you be efficient? If you look back in 1920, let's look, look back at your grandparents. Your grandparents grew at that level. That's how they consumed land in the 1920s, and that was 143% population growth in that period. So we just went ahead and took that and floated it over. When you adopted your growth boundary, check this out. Look at how much more land you consumed versus your grandparents in the 1920s, and you grew at 160%. You only grew at 20% more, but you consumed land three times the area. And again, this is, it's not that they didn't have cars in 1920, they had them. It's just that we've converted our methodology of how we think about the city as automobile first, rather than people first. And that brings down more land consumed in the process. But this is just, these are like some of the under-the-hood stuff that we poked around at to see where the, where the signal was in the noise of all of your information.
Yeah, you just wait, yeah. Do you want to follow up?
I think this will be interesting, if you go back to the how many roads can you afford slide. Another way to think about it is, you know, you have a suit that's a little too big, and you would need to add, you know, if you can afford about 71% of your roads, you keep the roads that you have, the same amount of infrastructure, and you just gain some weight. If you add some more people, you fill out the footprint you have right now, and it'll start to become more affordable.
Okay. Commissioner Fragler.
I do, I do have a question. It's a MPT question. And I was just curious, obviously, this is kind of a program that people have mixed feelings about, but the way I would look at it, and I'm curious if you would agree, is almost like an investment, that the city would be making this investment because theoretically, without that incentive, that parking lot stays a parking lot. The, I think the argument is that, no, no, it would be, somebody would build something anyway. But the whole reason that that MPT is even needed is because a bank doesn't, would look at the numbers and it wouldn't, they wouldn't finance that.
Yeah.
Or for a variety of different reasons. So I'm just kind of curious if, if this is something that other communities are using widespread, and, and, you know, just kind of how, and generally, this can be reframed as more of an investment than a.
What's, yeah, it's, it is an investment. That's the simplest way of looking at it. And one of the things that, you know, stepping outside of this city in Asheville and any other city that we work with, and just, one of the conversations that we have in our office is, is how bizarre our tax system is. Think of any other business, if y'all operate a business, or if I, if I was selling a lot of tech clickers, right? If I sold these things, this product, I know that there's a cost of plastic to this thing. There's a cost to the software that's in here and the little computer board. I have to get that cost out of you all when I sell it, right? It's real simple. There's a cost, I put it in the marketplace, and it's got to sell for the cost that it pays for. We have a tax system that's based on value. So right out the door, you have a perverse incentive to build junk, to consume your infrastructure, because you're not charging me for any of it. What we're doing from a theoretical standpoint is showing you how you actually cash flow, independent of that, because the stuff costs money and it's got to be paid for, and we're just showing you the gaps inside that system. I think at a national level, we all need to step back and say, we are operating on a 17th century tax system with really super weird policy constraints that have been put in over time, but at the basic level, we've, we've subsidized the wrong thing. Back when the tax system was in place, we didn't have this level of infrastructure or even asphalt to do this kind of investment that we did. And we weren't, we didn't pencil it out. But if you look at the old books on city and municipal finance from the 1920s and 30s, they were actually talking about this for a little while. We just got a little silly after World War II. So I think that, that at that level, you have to think of it this way, from a, how much time do we have? Are we, are we, we're good? I have to do a little schadenfreude for a second. If you want to talk about tax increment, I'll show you a disaster, but it's a good lesson here. Leander, Texas, we did a project on tax increment, and Leander, Texas is outside of, outside of Austin. Pretty right-wing place. This developer was doing a transit-oriented development. Here's Austin, they basically, the MPO ran a train line out there and dropped a train station in Leander, Texas. Now, you can see how the community deals with it. They just drop boxes next to it, and they're like, screw it, whatever, we don't care. You know, we're Texas, we're not going to get on that train. So this developer came in and wanted to do a TOD, a Transit-Oriented Development, mixed use, high-density spine of mix of uses, a public plaza, boxes by the highway, and then it densifies toward the train station with a bunch of townhouses. So the community was wrestling with, the developer wanted some tax increment or MPT into the project. They wanted $20 million to basically leverage getting the infrastructure built, because there's a lot more density of infrastructure in it. So simply put, the developer's like, well, you'll be willing to partner and invest in this. I'll build the buildings, you pay for the infrastructure, I'll pay you back over time. So that was the theoretical question. So it doesn't happen overnight, you get several phases, it takes time to build this stuff. So that's why the developer needs the city to leverage in that investment, because they can wait for that return longer than the developer can. So here they are. They're not great. They don't have a downtown. They have one building, they have an architect's office that's pulling about $6 million an acre of value as the peak right there. That's the most potent building in the entire city. So if you did your downtown, here's phase one, here's phase two, here's phase three. Two of the city councilors were just like, we don't want to mess with the market, we're fine with a Costco. That's what the market wants, so she just get that. We're like, all right, fine, we'll, we'll do the analysis. Now, in your defense, you don't have a downtown, you're not like your cousins Georgetown and Round Rock that have been around since the 1800s, they actually have downtowns. Y'all can see them in the model, right? You don't need me to point that out. Here, there's downtown Georgetown, here's downtown Round Rock. The tallest buildings in both those cities are three stories. So if you built your downtown right there, boom, this is what you get. So you essentially, what's crazy about this is this is the average value of your entire city per acre right there, 275. You'll almost double it just by adding one potent project. But again, they've been operating on a bias, they incorporated in the 70s, they've only been growing since the 60s and 70s. They've been building one pattern of American development. So here's your investment. The blue, light blue area is that tax increment investment, in your case, would be called MPT. In their case, it's called TIRS. But even though they're essentially loaning away that tax investment, they're starting to see a general fund bump in the project. Here's phase one, here's phase two, and here's phase three. So you see this huge balloon payment in taxation. So yes, you don't get all the money back all at once, you're only getting partial money, but even that partial money that you're getting is so much more potent than everything else around it, right there. So since you asked about the Costco, we went ahead and ran that, too. So on the left is the Costco, Target, and whatever other box they want, and on the right is their downtown, side by side. So do you want $62 million of development, or do you want 700 million? Do you want 60 or 700? This is your choice. And this is what that investment, that cooperative investment was, was to leverage a higher value over that area. And that's what it took, because from a, from an incentive standpoint, I could just go in as a developer, build a cheap box, and just be done with it, and walk away and pay low taxes. That's part of the market. But does that work for the community? Incidentally, they ended up voting five to two in favor of this. The two councilors that, one of the councilors that wanted the big box, during the testimony, she admitted that she was a commercial broker, and she wasn't in on the deal, which was super weird to hear at a public meeting, but it's Texas.
Okay, are you ready?
Sure.
How about you start with one, and then we'll go to Commissioner Rayme, or if there's nobody else, I can just have.
Well, let me just get started.
Okay.
So, thank you for the presentation. This kind of hits somewhat in my wheelhouse. So I was on the Budget Committee for seven years, before I got onto the Planning Commission for four years. I'm also sit on the Road Bond Committee, so I've seen this intersection from a bunch of different lenses. So I appreciate it. I've seen it, and I'm like, we need to look at it, and hopefully, department staff heads will be here and looking at it and talking to each other as well. But what, what I want to ask and get to is some of the things that will get to real-world downtown Eugene, or real-world Eugene. So I've looked at some of your things, I've looked at also some of your other talks that you've, you've done, and was quite intrigued. We've got not a lot of height to redevelop in Eugene, and I know that downtown Eugene is, or, you know, building high is what gets you to those price per acre. But building high is also expensive. You know, redeveloping high is less expensive than building high. So the first question, I guess, would be, what types of tools have you seen in other communities that help get those buildings actually built? One of the things that we've started doing here in Eugene in one small area is the form-based codes. And if you could talk to, if form-based codes is an area that would help to spurn that type of development? Are there other communities that require certain heights? Because right now, we don't require, you know, we say you can build, in commercial, you can build this, but we don't say you have to build this high. Are there communities that are doing those types of things?
Yeah, I was a, I was a zoning administrator in West Palm Beach, Florida, from 1998 to 2003, and for parts of our downtown, we had a mandatory two-story minimum. So think of it as a two-drink minimum. What's your civic investment in that infrastructure? And you should mandate that y'all should build at least to our investment, you know? And just, I don't, do whatever you want, but we need to recoup our money. And maybe in parts of your community, you think about it that way, where it's, and we in parts of your community, you think about it that way, where it's, and we did it, we did it because our downtown was having vacancy issues, but then also, like, a McDonald's would come in, and they'd just drop into McDonald's. We're like, "Look, you can do your McDonald's, but there needs to be a second story on it." Now, if a developer was looking at the property at that level, and they were forced into that level of investment, chances are, they'd go up to five stories, because they're looking at breakpoints based on cost of construction. So, I would look at, I would look at that, talk with your staff about, at what point does it turn into a high-rise code, or at what point do you require other civic investments? Can you do a one-story concrete box with four wood on top of it? That's pretty inexpensive. Y'all have a housing problem, so you need to be mindful of trying to make affordable housing happen, rather than make expensive housing happen. But yeah, it's all, it's all a cash flow analysis, but I would start with a, thinking of that two-story minimum parking requirements. Asheville has no parking requirements in their downtown at all, period, but they have a very proactive, or used to be more proactive, municipal parking investment. So, it's, it's that, you can't just wish the car away. People are going to still show up, but you, what you can do is, this is the impervious surface. This is just looking at the valuation of those parking lots in isolation. So, right away, you see that your value of your parking is already super high in the downtown. If you look at a surface parking lot in the downtown, it's so much more potent than a surface parking lot out here. Another way of looking at that is, there's a subsidy to waste your land further out the line, yet your infrastructure is more expensive out there. So, that's another question to ask yourself, is don't think just about your downtown. Remove those impediments that get in the way of doing that more potent building, but also, look at where you're bleeding your money further out, you know? Is it easier to build at the edge of your town than in your core? Are you going to drive me through, you know, a two-year-long process to belabor a building in the downtown, which you should care about its design quality, but you should have that same process and be equal about it in the suburban area where it's costing you more? You should put that same level of attention and care in all parts of your community. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, to it, it's...
Now, as far as one thing about, a lot of times when people see this presentation, or any presentation I do, they're just like, "Well, Joe, you just want to see tall buildings all over the place." Let me show you something here real quick. This is in Florida. This is actually West Palm Beach again. You know, this is a three-story building next to a skyscraper. They're two blocks away from each other. Notice that the three-story building is actually more potent per acre than the skyscraper. So, I wouldn't necessarily say that it's got to be tall to be potent. You can have low potency. The evaluation of that Texas project, most of the potency came from townhouses, just squeezing housing together, and they were all two-story townhouses, or two-and-a-half story. So, you can, you can yield high potency just by density and design, your FAR of the property. And that's something you should achieve as well, is like, are you successfully getting enough density in properties? FAR could come with a three-story building that covers this entire lot, you know, versus that that has a low FAR, because it's got a big field of whatever shrubs that you can walk by, you know? It's still a big, ugly building. Incidentally, I do call it Darth Vader Building in West Palm. Josh?
You have one of those?
Oh, yeah. Are these two here? Yeah. So, look at the, the FAR of this is 5.45, and this is only 5.72. This is just a little bit more dense, even though it's twice as high as that building. And it's because it's got a boundary around it where it steps in a little bit. So, you've lost that opportunity. So, is it better to have the building step back a little bit? Did you gain anything out of that? I don't know. That's, that's a value choice for you all.
So, one more quick one. Again, real-world, some of the things that we're dealing with in Eugene that I think you've dealt with, and hopefully, you can help us with. So, we're doing some redevelopment down on the riverfront, and one of our issues down there, obviously, is going to be parking. If you could tell us and some of the people that are in this room about 51 Biltmore, and how you public-private partner to get the, to get the parking built at 51 Biltmore, I thought that was fascinating when I saw it in one of your presentations. And I don't know what that might be.
Yeah, so 51 Biltmore is, it's a parcel that we owned, our parent company. And I'll just go say, I'm trained as an architect. I don't think this is the, we could have had a better piece of architecture, but we were essentially vilified in our community and treated as fat cat developers and whatever. So, we had to spend our time just trying to get this through the process. And so, we spent less time with the architecture, which is incredibly frustrating. But this is a hotel with housing on the backside, and this housing is low-market housing with mixed use on the ground floor, which are artist studios and a wine bar right there. So, there's the site. It was a hot dog joint in the surface parking lot back in the 90s. We were managing it as a surface parking lot, charging for the parking, and basically paying more than the taxes to charge for parking. It was super awesome. But we saw the benefit to our community in this. We're kind of a different-minded real estate developer. But, you know, it's really nothing to write home about. The hot dog place was literally called the Hot Dog King, and there was a hot dog with tilting a crown. But this is the, a developer approached us and wanted to do a hotel. And Aloft Hotels are a mid-price point hotel. It's mid to low. We have a nightclub down the street that we know that people were coming from two hours away to stay in downtown. We thought, "Well, it'd be nice if they just walked up the street instead of drove away from the nightclub after they watched, you know, a Bob Dylan or Beastie Boys show." You know, it's like, a lot of place for them to stay. So, we're going to do housing, and then housing the third building over here, and the city was going to do the parking garage. So, we went to the city and said, "You know, city, let's partner on this." What was really funny is, as we were going through the process, this was the drawing that we had, and we like, wanted to make it simple so that people understood it. The poor council got like a 54-page legal document to describe this, so we made this model. Like, "Let's just talk about what it really is and make it simple for people to understand this. Here's the city's parking garage. They have a fee simple. They own the dirt with the parking garage in it. They have an easement under our building, because it's an underground deck. We're going to have fee simple here, and then we're going to spring over the top and do fee simple here. So, we're going to have air rights, and we're going to have fee simple. So, we're wrapping a non-taxable thing with taxes, basically. And then there's a park, the hotel's going to be over here. So, we're encapsulating a public deck." This is how we got treated in the newspaper, which was incredibly awesome. Incidentally, we actually started this newspaper, which was super cool. It was just really frustrating, and we had to mire our way through this process and take the bumps along the way. So, flash forward, here we are 10 years later, and I showed this at our State of the Downtown address. I said, "So, that was the value. That's the taxes paid off that surface parking lot in 2008." So, here we are 10 years later, and we're now paying $300,000 in taxes for this, and it's still not done. There will be a third building that sits over the top of this, like an upside-down U, that still has to be built. So, that was a 2,900% growth in taxes. So, y'all get 2,900%. I was showing this to my, the president of the company, and Pat's really funny. He's like, "Joe, you always liked making pictures. Why don't you make pictures?" And I'm like, "Fair enough. Here's what 11,500 looks like next to 300,000." Or, another way of looking at it is that you all made a municipal investment, right? So, you invested in this project. What was your tax return on that project? What was your return on investment? So, if we look at it at other forms of investment, I could have a dollar of downtown value in 2008. If I bought a dollar of downtown, it essentially grew to almost double the value. Our downtown is worth $1 billion right now, which is insane, because we're only 90,000 people. We're, our downtown is much more potent than yours. But hey, you know, you could have put your money in S&amp;P 500 or NASDAQ. That'd be better than putting in our downtown. But hold on a second. What happened to your valuation on that park deck? So, this is, this is where it goes. It's actually up over here. So, my question to my community is, was that a good return on investment? Looks like it to me. My city actually calls it a cash cow. That they bought a 20-year bond, they're going to pay off that bond in year eight. So, from year eight to year 20, that's all straight gravy in that parking deck, and they're actually using that money to subsidize our transit system. So, as much as y'all hate cars, and we're evil for building a parking deck, realize that's supporting our transit system. We're trying to cultivate wealth in our community. We can't tell people to not show up in Asheville and leave their car in Charlotte and just magically transport themselves. We need a place for the tourists that come to town to park, and what's good is, they park there, and they never leave there, they never get their car again. They walk around downtown and stay downtown.
And you, as a developer, built the parking garage?
Yeah.
And gave it back to the city?
Well, it was basically a turnkey operation. It's their object, but we basically constructed it. And it was easier for us to do that all in one fell swoop, and we're going to negotiate for our best interests from a valuation standpoint, anyway.
Thank you. I thought that was a very interesting project.
So, no, Commissioner Baker?
No.
Oh, he doesn't have to question.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was wondering about, you know, one of our concerns in the community is shortage of, of lower-priced housing. And we keep talking about building new, lower-priced housing, but we don't really, unless it's, unless it's the Housing Authority, equivalent of the Housing Authority, nonprofit, we don't really get it. In the past, we had some requirements, you know, that when you built a housing project, so many units, I mean, is there some way to, I mean, you were a creative developer, but many developers may not be quite as open-minded or maybe more interested in maximizing their profits.
Yeah.
How would, how do you do that in a way that would benefit the community?
Well, in the case of, in the case of that project, the 51 Biltmore, it was, it was kind of fascinating, because the city actually wanted us to pay for parking spaces. And we said to them, we said, "Look, what are you going to charge us for parking spaces?" And they said, "Well, it's going to cost us $38,000 a space, and we need you to do that for your housing." And we said, "Well, if we do that, we're going to take that $38,000, and we're going to put it into the cost of the housing, because we don't just have $38,000 sitting in our pocket. You're going to make our housing $38,000 more expensive." And then when we buy that parking space and make the housing more expensive, we're going to put up a reserve sign so that nobody else could use it. How about this? We'll let our people, if they choose to own a car, they'll come to you and buy a parking pass. And then when they leave to go hiking, or go to work, or go wherever, you can resell that parking space. You'll make two and three times the revenue by reselling that space, that infrastructure. That's one of the reasons why that, that deck is so far ahead of schedule, is that they're able to double down and make more money on that deck. It's treated as a public infrastructure. So, in having a conversation with a developer, just be mindful and open. One is, find a developer that's willing to be open and transparent about the costs, and hear them about the costs inside the market, and what it takes to do that building in proximate value, and realize that they don't have a money mill where they can go off into some closet and print more money, that there is a cost to this stuff, you know? And it's just, all the things that we say that we want, there is a cost. "I want to be six foot tall, and I have a full head of hair. I think you should pay for that." Like, I mean, it's kind of nonsense that we sometimes have a conversation with somebody that's actually got to make this stuff penciled out, and the same is true for the city. The city's got to pencil this stuff out, too. So, as long as you're talking about this cooperatively, and saying, "It's going to cost more to do the housing in our core area, because we might be a fire district or a high-rise code," first question to ask is, is that necessary to have those rules there? You know, is it, is it necessary to make things more expensive? And just be, be open about it. But you will have to pay for subsidizing housing. And the market's not going to go out and magically do that. If I could sell you a house, the same house for $200,000 or $400,000, what do you think I'm going to do? I'm going to take the $400,000. But it's a question of, what does it take to build that house in the first place? You can do inclusionary zoning is one of the things to do, but make sure you're penciling it out, and again, having that conversation with the development community about the costs that then they have to bake into the system. But I think another way of looking at it is, if you're giving me the incentive to sit on your land and not do anything, and not charge me for it, that's going to be a problem inside the system as well. So, I've already showed you what the vacant lots are, right? I can keep on sitting on it. Until you charge me more for it, and give me an impact fee for wasting your infrastructure, I'm going to keep on wasting your infrastructure. So, are you familiar with Henry George Land Value Taxation? Have you heard of Land Value Taxation?
Years ago.
Yeah, Henry George was a tax economist from the 1800s, and if you think about the problems that y'all have, actually, any American city's got right now, it's nothing in comparison to what we were all going through in the 1800s. And so, Henry George came up with this concept of land value taxation. So, right now, if I sit on your land, you're taxing me for how I use it, right? So, if I don't use your land, and I just have a surface lot, I'm taxed at that value, what the value of the dirt is. There's no improvement there, right? So, Henry George thought, "Well, you know, why, just because your family was the Coppelys, and they stepped off the Mayflower, and all this flood of Europeans came to Boston, and our prices went up, and people started jamming themselves in tenements, why could you sit on that land and just bequeath it to your grandkids? And we all have to pay for that road, the garbage truck that goes by, all of that stuff, and yet, you're being taxed at vacant land. That seems patently unfair." So, he came up with this concept of flipping the script and charging a single tax based on proximity and infrastructure. So, if you're in the core of the city, you should be taxed higher, because that's where all the infrastructure is, and even if we put a road or whatever, we should be charging you at least that. A really simple concept. It actually spread like wildfire across the country as a movement, kind of like how we talk about New Urbanism as a movement. Back in the 1800s, it was called Georgism. Elizabeth Maggie Phillips was a Georgist. She has awesome eyebrows, and she tried to find a way to reach people, and she's, you know, she really simply thought, "You know, I can't reach adults. Adults are too set in their ways. It's too complicated. They've already framed and formed an opinion. What I'm going to do is work with kids and teach kids land value taxation." So, she invented a board game. Anybody want to guess what that game is? Monopoly. She called it the landlord's ta, the landlord's game. And think about the rules of monopoly. How do you win at monopoly? Location, 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 super important, land assembly, and you put buildings on it. She was teaching us how to create value. I mean, just look out this window. Look at how much real estate is wasted between here and the next building. That's all lost value. So, this is the epicenter of your city, how we're using it. But anyway, that's, I like the, plus she does have awesome eyebrows, but I like this story. Think about that intellectually, about this model, and where your costs are, and start to recoup that first, and try to make sure you're not losing money and setting that balance. So, if you think of land value taxation, if you, if you charge, if I charge you through the nose because of all this infrastructure, go ahead and speculate all you want. We're at least getting our money back. Pittsburgh did this in the 1970s. They set a high land value tax. The projects we do in Australia and New Zealand, they set a high land value tax. We see this in other countries. So, Pittsburgh was one of the few American cities that didn't experience teardowns in the 1970s and 80s, because if I had two buildings side by side, in any other American city, if I tear that building down, I've taken my value down to that level. In Pittsburgh, they're like, "We don't care. Tear your building down. We're going to still tax you like you were a building in our downtown." So, people didn't tear buildings down. It's real simple, not simple economics.
I have a couple more questions. Commissioner Baker?
I was just curious if there was a type of use or a type of structure that was kind of a sweet spot. I mean, as far as like, you know, high-end housing, low-end housing, mixed use, I mean, is there something that it's, or is it kind of vary?
It's going to vary based on, on space. Let me go back to the Brady Bunch for a second.
I just didn't know if there was like a kind of a rule of thumb, or if it was really just kind of based on the market.
I mean, usually, usually the townhouse stuff is still, feels like a house. You know, you have dirt, you have walls, you're not in a condominium box, but it's super productive from a density standpoint. Those are usually hard to refine, because they, we just haven't had a history of building them. And that's a typology that could be efficient from a walkability standpoint. You know, obviously, you're going to want to think about areas, maybe, let's, maybe a better way of looking at it is using the model as a, as a device, and letting it tell you what's going on. You're starting to see some stuff over here in Crescent Village, and then ask yourself, "Well, what's going on positive here, and why don't I have anything out here doing that?" You know, what's, what's going on in these neighborhoods? You're going to have quirks because of your, your measures that distort things based on when it was born, but, but you're going to see where you have areas of success going on, so how do you expand that success? It's, think of like, a mini version of how you would do the downtown. In the downtown, you're going to want to fill spikes in between the big spikes, but you could also cultivate wealth out here, or see where you're, where you're, you're losing the money, and try to stop the bleeding.
So, I have a, I have a question that's just not necessarily as relevant, but I'm interested. Is there an example of a state that has an effective tax policy?
You know, we were actually talking about this at lunch today, just that everybody uses different math. In North Carolina, our tax system is 2 plus 2 equals 4. In South Carolina, it's 3 plus 1 equals 4. In Oregon, it's 22 times 16 divided by the square root of 47 equals 4. You know, everybody yields the same results, and you could just, you know, it's America. You go around and look at the American city, and you see the same junk in every city. You know, it's just a matter of how much junk, but Josh?
Give a highlight of some of my, my favorites, my best and worst tax systems, property tax... Give, give a highlight of some of my, my favorites, my, my best and worst tax systems, property tax systems of America, not just America, but the two that really stand out to me are Minnesota's tax system, which is very similar to Ontario's. A lot of people give Minnesota's flack because it's a little complicated. But, once you kind of learn how it works, there's a certain elegance to it. What, what they've done is they, they charge essentially through some, some wheels and levers, charge different rates for different kinds of uses, or they have that ability to do that. And so it's sophisticated enough that, you know, like, low, low-income housing, or, or, you know, what we might call workforce housing pays a lower tax rate than luxury housing, uh, single-family homes over a million dollars, that kind of thing. There's, there's like 150 of these categories.
Isn't that called equal taxation?
I don't know. Is, is, you mean, it's a technical name?
I don't know, it's what the revolution was about.
Oh, actually, there's a, there's a great, uh, since you're bringing the revolution into this, there's a great colonial saying that we used to say, back when we were all colonists. "Don't tax me, don't tax thee, tax the fellow behind the tree." And that was made popular by Huey Long, Louisiana. But we're a country of tax evaders, essentially. And this is how we've always operated, that we've always found the loopholes in the tax system. But if you think about the folks that are actually making the tax system, we're all residents, basically. We're the voters, we run for office, we end up on boards and committees, or council, running the corporation. And so it makes sense to reduce our tax burden, and we're looking for somebody to put that burden onto. But in the case of the Canadians, well, actually, we can go to the Dutch, who basically came up with the word in corp, uh, corporation. The Dutch actually give low-income residents a, um, like a, like a rebate that you can go in and apply for rebate, because they know that most low-income folks are living inside rental conditions. Now, as a rental property owner, I'm not going to take the tax burden that you all put on me, and just, out of the goodness of my heart, just pull it out of my, my wallet. I'm going to pass that on to my tenant as a cost of my building. So the, the Dutch realized that, and they're like, "Well, we should allow that renter to get the rebate rather than the property owner." So they just have a rebate system that they, now communicating that is going to be complicated. How do you get folks in a low-income situation to understand that? We did a project in, actually, Indiana.
If you want equal taxation, then I guess you're not going to have lower income. You're going to have to start changing your system. Either everybody comes up to the same level if we're going to pay those kind of taxes, and then we all pay the same amount. You can't keep dividing the people against themselves and, and think that you're going to get away with it without some kind of horrendous damages that are going to come into effect. You have people walking around this town constantly with nowhere to go. And they are made fun of, they're, have people give them disgusting looks. It's like, "How dare you. I can't go here and buy all the things I want to buy because you're there." Well, where do you spit? Where do you shit? Where do you clean up? How do you live? If everybody says it's not my problem, then get the hell out of here! If it's not your problem. You live here, you're a part of this community.
Yeah, let me, uh,
Let's let him finish, and then afterwards, I think, yeah.
Let me, let me, well, let me, let me try to answer that. So, so, um, this is, this is in Asheville. In our, in our community, if you have mountain-top real estate, it's kind of like the equivalent of being beachfront. This is the governor's west, western retreat. So we in the state of North Carolina have bought our governor a house in Asheville to hopefully lure him up to talk to us. Because in the western part of the state, we're treated like chopped liver. You know, it's hard to get somebody from Raleigh to come up and talk to us, crazy mountain people. So, there's a house right here, just on the same ridge line, and you can see that they have a tennis court. It's not a massive stretch to the imagination to realize this is probably a wealthy person if they're living on top of a mountain with 360-degree views and their own personal tennis court, because why would they want to go mix with the great unwashed? And go play tennis down with those people, right? So you'd probably agree with me that this is a rich person, right? This is in one of our poor black neighborhoods. This is a house with a lovely estate of three trees in the middle of the black neighborhood, and that's the old black elementary school from when we had segregation in the south. So it's not a stretch to the imagination that this is probably somebody of low wealth that lives in my community and that lovely estate, right? So, the middle is my house, or my old house, and, uh, those are my dogs, by the way. And you can see high wealth, middle income, and low wealth, right? When you look at the tax bill, and you see our property value, our total value, you can see high, middle, and low, right? Y'all follow me? Now let's look at the dirt value per acre. Let's make it apples to apples, and just look at the dirt of how we're being taxed in all of these three neighborhoods. Does that look fair to you? Why is the rich house being taxed lower than the poor house for the dirt? I showed this to our city, to our county assessor, and I asked her, I said, "Linda, why, why is that neighborhood being taxed more for its dirt rather than the rich people on top of the mountain?" Again, this is straight out of the tax system. You know what her answer was to me? "Because those people have more police services to them." And I asked her, I said, "Linda, do you want to say that in a public meeting out loud to a bunch of people? Would you say that out loud?" And she goes, "No, I'll take that back." I'm like, "You probably should." But this is how our tax system foists itself onto the bird, onto the backs of the people that can least afford it. And that's all that we ask, is you run the numbers and pay con, be conscious to it. So I can be, I can be up here and say a lot of histrionics and a lot of things about the system, but I need you to see the system, and see the inefficiencies in it, and be mindful of, of those conscious trade-offs. And yes, the, the poor are with us, and we have to have that basket inside to lift the whole community up. But you first have to see where you're bleeding your money all over the place. And it's not, it's not in the downtown, it's all this periphery of stuff that you're paying for that you're upside down. So we're just trying to get you to see that, and then make the choices. These are going to be your community's choices going forward. But, uh, realize that the system has a lot of flaws in it. And just be mindful of that. Moses didn't deliver your tax system. So this is all human policies, trying their best, and there's going to be unintended consequences. But you're not this bad off. Welcome to the south, so.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah. This brings up a question. I think we, I think we still have, we, we have an FAR ratio for, sort of, commercial sort of in the downtown area. And there was a push to try to get that FAR ratio up to two. And then the, the business developers basically fought it back, so it's still at one. So you still see new development going on in the, you know, within six, six or eight blocks, or 10 blocks, say, of downtown that is still one-story and commercial. And even on our corridors, we, we just recently saw where a bowling alley burned down, and there was an opportunity, we, it was an area called, we called South Lamont, where we were trying to densify. One of the corridors we were trying to densify, and we had all these plans that didn't quite get through, but the developer came back in and just built one story.
Yeah, well, if you can allow me to build, under-build in your community, I'm going to do it. You know, and it's, it's not to vilify that situation, but to understand the economics at play. And, and I, you know, I tell people about this, about the Walmart. It's like, don't hate on the Walmart, understand the system that they're taking advantage that's in your community. So don't hate the player, hate the game. Understand that if you're going to give me the ability to do that most minimal investment, at least get your money back on what you've invested in that property. This is a cooperative corporation. That land would be worth nothing until you, as a community, afford me the ability to access it, right? So once you run the pipe and the road and whatever to that road, that, that property, as a corporation, you've made your investment. So the question is, is the taxation covering the cost of your investment? It should at least be equal. With the land value taxation, one of the things that you'll see at that level is that some people may choose to sit on that land and speculate. But at least you're getting some more money back into the system, or you'll find the people that were speculating that all of a sudden realize, you know, "It's costing me more to carry this land, I don't really need it." So I'm just going to go ahead and put it in the marketplace, and you're going to see a dump of land go into the marketplace, which is going to drive down the cost of all that property, or adding more supply into the system. And then all of a sudden, folks that actually are willing to actually, you know, be the man in the arena and help build in your community will have more access to real estate, which means they can drive their prices down, too. All this affects the market, it's all tied together.
Well, since you've looked at our tax structure, is there anything in the state legislation that would prevent, you know, I guess it would have to be a county rather than the city, because the city is sort of a created within the county. Would there be any, uh, what would be needed, or is there anything that would prevent you from changing the structure for our property taxes in, say, Lane County, to charge for the infrastructure better?
You could do a, again, back to the transportation utility fee. You could do that. Ashland has one, I think your city actually considered one at one point in time. That's enabled by your state to do that. That's not enabled in, in California, where we're working down there. So certain states do it out, Utah, Texas, Colorado, have all experienced transportation utility fees. I think that as cities move forward, we're going to start thinking that way. And start thinking of, you know, "We can measure this stuff. We have computers and Excel spreadsheets and maps, we can measure this stuff." The, the, the map on the left here is your, is your rebate system. So you already have the formal, formal process of identifying where you want to maximize your infrastructure around your transit system. So you could think about the those rebates. You can also think about the, the impact fees differently. Right now, the impact fee is, I walk into your community, and you extract something out of me as a builder. So what I'm going to do is put that into the cost of people behind me, that I'm selling the product to. The folks that got in the door in 1970 aren't being charged for all of that, and you may find that some of their development is already upside down financially, and they're receiving the benefit of a subsidy. So at least write that down, so y'all are conscious to it, and make sure that you can afford the system. But if there's a, if there's a subsidy already baked into the system, do the math on it and, and, and account for it. The same way your, your accountant's going to not make, you know, a judgment call, it's just going to see what's currently costing your business, and where your revenues are. Does that make sense? And, and, and Calif, and the project in California, they're calling it a form-based fee system, is intellectually how they're getting their brain around it, to say that we've got areas of our downtown that are currently being speculated on, and we've committed that investment, so we want to have a minimum FAR of development there to be able to cover our costs back. And that we're going to start to discourage stuff that's way out at the edge of the community. They've got a lot more land to grow into, into their urban growth boundary, and they're starting to realize that that's kind of silly. So we're actually recommending to them to expand their solar panel program. They have one of the, one of the best solar programs in the entire state of California. They actually sell energy through the whole state system. They're, they're on the edge of a desert. You know, it's easy for them to pull money from the sun. So we're, you know, it's, again, finding ways to balance and, and capitalize on their assets.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yeah, I think what you just talked about, it leads into my next question. So we have a lot of stuff that's been baked in. You know, we've built a lot of pipes, we've done a lot of things. And I guess one of the questions that I would have would be, how can we extract? I mean, I think one of the ways we could, knowing our fee and tax structure, would be through different methodologies for our system development charges, and for our wastewater, and, and that type of fees. That's where we have a little bit of, of play. But I guess what it gets down to me is, I see coming forward a lot more black sites. We've got a big one out in West Eugene, and a black site is a, is a piece of property that's been developed. All the infrastructure's been put into it, and then it goes away. So we've got one, it was a semiconductor thing that we put a lot of money into, and it, they, it was a hundred and fifty million-dollar site, it just sold for fifteen million dollars. We put all the, all the infrastructure is there, it's still sitting shuttered. And with the way that I see retail going with Amazon, I think we're going to see a lot more black sites in the retail side. So how do you see a way to claw back some of that infrastructure money that we put into all these black sites, that we didn't recuperate with the SDCs at the time, but that are just sitting and costing us?
I'd have to see the, the site location and, and where it is inside the system. I mean, there's a lot of variables there to, to consider. You know, as, as far as recouping that investment, and maybe it was the wrong investment. You know, there's a, there's a book, Nobel Prize-winning economist, his name is, uh, Richard Thayer, wrote a book called Misbehaving, that I'll recommend to you all, but he won a Nobel Prize in Economics. And one of my favorite, and there's actual science behind this, and it's called The Fallacy of the Sunk Cost. I'll give you a quick example of that. So with, when, when people do investments, you know, we've all used this term, like, it's like, "Well, I paid for it, I might as well use it," right? So as, we were doing a project in South Bend, Indiana. This is, uh, on the, on the lower left is their population. So their apex year was 1963, that was their best year ever. And then they lost Duda Baker and Packard to Detroit. You see that their population drops, and they kind of flatline. What's keeping them alive is Notre Dame University, or the University of Notre Dame, I can't remember which one, one or the other. But on the right, Josh made a map of their pipes. "I'll drop a boundary when their population stops." So, come on now. Nope, didn't work. Let's see. It's not going to run for me, sorry about that. They basically, um, I don't know why it's not working. On the right is their pipes going in the ground, and they're building their community, they're growing out. "And I'll drop a boundary when their population stops." So everything looks normal, everything's growing out, and then right about here is when their population stops. Y'all see a problem? They're adding more infrastructure. The problem is that infrastructure cost doesn't come due until their grandkids show up. They've built more infrastructure, they have less people, they're not adding more people. The fallacy of sunk costs is right here, this one pipe down here. They built a pipe all the way down here to lure a Walmart in down here. The Walmart didn't show up, and their attitude was, "Well, we put seven million dollars in the ground, let's go ahead and put some housing next to it." That housing right there will never pay the cost of what all that pipe is. And what they've done, because they're not adding more people, they've just competed against themselves in here. Because it's just going to draw more of their population further out on a system that they can't afford. So I'd have to analyze, what was your investment? What can you get in the area? Is it in the right area? I don't know. I don't know what that investment is and how you did it. But in their case, that was a silly investment. And again, that's the fallacy of the sunk cost. Get past that and realize they'd be better off just cutting the pipe in the ground and just saying, "We, we got a little crazy. We drank a little too much," or something, you know, just, that's an investment we're going to walk away from. And it's hard, because there's, there's, there's human behavior at play in how our, our buggy system and our brain works, and things that we think we're being rational actors, and there's actually science of how we operate and make irrational choices, because we act emotively and don't understand the cost of all this stuff. But that's, I'd, I'd recommend Misbehaving, it's a great book, and it helps explain the irrational process of how we operate. And, you know, we're hairless apes.
Does it have solutions?
Some of this, don't, don't try to do the Hail Mary pass, don't try to do a silver bullet project, don't hope to get it all back in one clawback. This is all about nudges in the system. All little things you can do, but you have to be mindful of the data and the information. You constantly have to have a conversation about this, and be willing about to have an, an honest conversation about what the costs and revenues are in your community. And, and you have to have a suspended, a suspended system of your biases, and putting your biases on the curb for a little bit, and having some curiosity about your own city. You know, no one's perfect, we're all human in this, and we have to kind of be mindful of that. Does that make sense? That, that there, you're not alone in this. You're in better shape than a lot of the cities that we see. You have a great staff that are doing this stuff. And you have a, a community that's mindful to have open conversations about the challenges.
Does anybody else have a question? And I, I want to do a time check, just because I'm not sure we're here till eight. Do we run it till eight, or do you have staff, do you have anything else for us? Okay, so, you have till, we have till eight?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah.
Yeah. One of the issues that comes up a lot with, with sort of the, some of the zoning changes and that are being proposed is that, and I'll relate my own experience. I live in this particular neighborhood that became solely a student neighborhood. It actually had some permanent residents, and now the number of permanent residents who live there more than a year is probably 1/4 of 1%. So there's a concern about changes, and it may very well be because very often you tend to propose large changes rather than maybe smaller ones, that destabilizes a neighborhood, and then it becomes a problem, you know? In other words, you have a stable neighborhood that's functioning, there's some cohesion and, you know, concern for the neighborhood, and then it becomes, by making some changes, you end up significantly destabilizing the neighborhood, and then it really no longer functions sort of as a neighborhood. And you have these problems, like, say, the policing. In our case, the policing problems are not by race or ethnicity, they're by a certain cadre of the age group of the population that are here temporarily, generally. So is there some way to deal with that issue by maybe making more milder changes or proposing changes over time rather than dramatic changes?
That might be too abstract a question for me. I guess what's going in my head is, shut the university down, you know, it's, it's...
Oh, and just for a point of information, the university had a minor cooperative program. They were paying for half of a police person to police the main sort of shopping street that goes to the university. That was their big concession.
Well, but what data did you put forward? And Josh is going to hop in here.
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's a couple of things. One is, to be honest, our look at this was so heavily focused on the broad idea of the relationship between development and infrastructure costs, that it's a little bit, it's a little past what we really looked at to give the right answer to. But I will say, an example that really comes to mind for me is that exact problem. In fact, a combo of that problem and the other one we talked about, which is redlining and disinvested neighborhoods, came up in Chapel Hill with the University of North Carolina, where the student housing, basically because there had been so much resistance to student housing in the wealthier neighborhoods in Chapel Hill, it got pushed to the old red line neighborhoods, which were historically black. And it became a real challenge, because you now had two sort of underrepresented communities being stuck in the same part of town. And I don't know, it's always hard to say how successful the outcome has been, but the approach is very interesting, that the town of Chapel Hill and the University of North Carolina partnered with SelfHelp, which is a sort of nonprofit banking institution in North Carolina, to try and get control over, get more equity and investment to the original residents with low wealth, so that whatever happens in their community, they have a bigger stake in it. So this is an interesting example, I thought I'd share with you.
There's a lot of university towns that have that, and I'd recommend perhaps visiting them. I mean, Chapel Hill, 60% of their city is non-taxable, which is insane. They've got Duke and Chapel Hill consuming a lot of their real estate. So the city's really concerned about these behemoths not paying taxes. Now, if you talk to the university, they're going to have the flip side of this. Now, you all don't have retail taxes, but you have businesses that are thriving on those student investments. So anybody that's got a college kid knows that money doesn't stay in college kids' pockets all that long. It's immediately out the door in all sorts of purchases in the community. And you typically see that economic bump in a lot of places, where those 20-year-olds are dropping their money all over the place. So that keeps a lot of businesses afloat. But you all don't have retail taxes, so you don't benefit from the retail transactions. But you do benefit from the record store, the bar, the nightclub. These are all business folks within your community that are paying property taxes and those bricks and mortar establishments. And those small businesses actually produce a lot of revenue for your community that way. They're also great residents, because they volunteer for committees, they get involved in their committee, uh, community. So it's hard. I mean, you're starting with one area, also Duke University actually partners and builds housing in the communities to try to solve that problem. So there are universities that step up, that cooperate and see their investment. But you're also going to hear back from them that their students pay rent, which pays taxes in your community and all this other stuff. You just have to be open about the conversation and realize that it's not a one-way street. You know, a lot of cities would kill to have your quantity of students in your community. So that brings revenue. You're importing people to your community. Does that make sense?
Yeah. No, and again, I'm not against the student housing. I think the issue was, if only 75% of the student, of the housing in that area was student housing, then it would be fine. There would be some stability. But when you get to be 99%, it gets to be an issue.
Why isn't the university building more housing?
They haven't, they only really recently started building dorms. They hadn't built dorms since the '40s. Another, if I could throw in another question that's completely unrelated.
60s.
60s.
Yeah.
66.
Yeah.
Okay, 66, okay.
Twenty years down there.
Right, yeah. I actually worked on the remodel of the dorms in the 85.
Well, that's, but that's all, that's data that you could track, which is, that was the data of growth of their, of their population and what's been the supply growth of housing. But that's also an opportunity in the private sector that you can start to capitalize on that, too. That, you know, why not have student housing that's close to campus, that's higher density, that produces a high tax return to your community? It's actually a benefit if a private developer builds that student housing than the school does. So that's something to bear in mind as well.
That's generally what's happened in Eugene.
Commissioner Baker, can I have you hold? Let's make sure we don't have that much time. Any other questions?
I just have one more comment. Again, thank you very much for the presentations and opening our eyes. I think that, like you said, we are in a pretty good space as a community. I think there's a lot of policies that dovetail well into this type of analysis. You know, we've got a climate energy action ordinance that is kind of pushing us to densify. We have a UGB, which, you know, a lot of states don't have urban growth boundaries. We haven't utilized it to the extent, but we're getting to that point where it is starting to push in on us and making us more dense. We made a conscious decision through efficiency measures that we wanted to put 1,000 door fronts in our downtown, rather than expand the urban growth boundary. So these are all policy things that I think are leading us in the direction that your data is trying to have us drive. We also have a transportation system plan that was recently adopted that basically said, we're not going to add any more capacity over the next 20 years. We're going to maintain what we have, and the only capacity that we're going to, that we're going to increase builds to 20-minute neighborhoods. It's bike, pad, and transit capacity. So I think that as a city, we're taking, we're heading, I think we're heading in the right direction. And I think what I hope that people at this table and people in the room and other people that hear your talks will get is that, to get over that next hump, it may take some community investment, whether that's dollars from the community or saying, I'm not going to drive my car downtown today, I'm going to take the bus, or I'm going to walk to the store. I think that those are the important things. And having these tools behind us to say, when somebody says, why are you giving a 10-year tax break to somebody who's densifying downtown? We've got your data in our pocket to say, this is why. And so I really appreciate what you've done.
And I, just to build on that, I think this is the image to have on a conversation, that there is a subsidy in the system, and this is what it looks like. So yes, you're making a conscious conversation about an individual project, but let's talk about and be mindful of the subsidy that we've already baked into the system that everybody's enjoying. Let's just be honest about it. There it is. That's it. This is what subsidy spread across the community looks like, and can you afford it? And just, yes, you're having an honest, transparent conversation about me as a developer that comes in and asks for a MPT or something, but let's be equally honest about the information that shows that we've got a subsidy across the system already. We've subsidized something, or our grandparents subsidized something by having the policies that we have. And there's a lot of things you can't control that the state subsidizes that system, too. So as long as you're equal and obvious and, or transparent about it, that's where you start with this conversation. That's one of the reasons why we did this model. You won't see it looking at the top of the model, but the bottom of the model is where it becomes obvious. So just, it's an image. This is what your money looks like, is a cash flow. So it's, and again, not about one in particular neighborhood. This is about the entire system of what it looks like.
So you only have a couple of minutes, and I would love your words of wisdom. So, so in terms of next steps, and as we have, we've got a lot of very big projects, actually, that are coming up, that actually are touch on this in terms of policy changes, et cetera, urban reserves we're going to be talking about. How, how have you seen communities or assisted communities in keeping this top of mind? What's the effective way? Because there are tensions, right? In a lot of these discussions.
One of the projects we worked on, well, one is, is look at those, those small pieces that you can do, the infill stuff. You know, there's a lot of priorities that you already have that match up with what you should be doing. We're more the ledger of looking at the, we've created the ledger to see what's going on at the community level. But, let's see, back to, got a lot of PowerPoints open right now. In Salt Lake, well, actually, this is, this is one of the, one of the, oops, one of the analyses that we did in South Bend, to see whether or not they're being equitable about how their tax system worked. So we looked at all the different tax deductions you get if you live in South Bend, Indiana. So if you're a disabled veteran over the age of 65 that happens to have a heritage barn with a solar panel, you're good. You're not paying hardly any taxes, right? So Josh mapped it. And one of the things that you immediately see in this model is all, is that a lot of the gray stuff is pretty much paying full freight. A lot of that's the commercial stuff. When you look at the housing, and we'll take this one neighborhood right here, if you look at, on the street, the housing units are architecturally pretty consistent. But when you look at the, just take this neighborhood, this neighborhood's paying 55% of their taxes, while this neighborhood is paying close to 85%. So we asked the question, why is this neighborhood paying more full freight than that neighborhood? They both have rights to those transactions of those deductions, right? So we, you know, here's, there's those two neighborhoods. We pulled the race makeup of those two neighborhoods, and you see that one is predominantly green and yellow, which is Hispanic and African-American, while one is mostly blue, which is white. So the white folks are paying less of their tax bill than the African-American folks. So it became a question of, are you communicating the policy properly to the African-American property owners? Do they have access to government the same way that white folks do? So that became like, what's the policy there? So be mindful of these things. Be agnostic about what are our issues and how do we communicate? It's not going to be a traditional path. The way that we've gotten here is, we're not going to solve the problems by having the same exact conversations year after year without identifying that this, we got to turn the corner on the way that we talk about cities. This is, we're in a different world now. And what we see in community after community, that we all take our theatrical performance into the public discourse, and we're not honest about what the information is that we're looking at. It's going to be different from here on out. Cities are going to have to face this differently. So in Salt Lake County, the mayor of the county asked us to run a model of, so they have a strong mayor form of government for the entire county. The mayor asked us to do a model. Josh ran an analysis of that. So basically, one of the things that he wanted to do is proffer the idea that could the government be a wealth creation for the community and solve community issues? So if we're a government and we own real estate in the transit line, why aren't we using it to leverage our community's wealth to build affordable housing, teacher housing, whatever? We're sitting on land. And it's not just we, the county, it's you, the city, it's the school board, it's the state. We're all sitting on land that could be used for something. So just pulling the TODs, the Transit Oriented Area, along the transit line, that's 3% of the taxable land of the entire county, that's pulling 11% of the county's value. That's incredibly efficient. So if you find your publicly owned assets in that area, and so again, this is countywide, so everything from Salt Lake all the way down the line, just grabbing the public stuff like the university. Now, you're not going to go to the university and say, build private sector stuff, but you could find a parcel in there that you could do a cooperative development and maybe build some student housing. You know, maybe it's on campus, but you let a developer build the housing so it happens faster, and you get taxable land out of it. But just by looking at certain properties and just saying, we as a community want to build wealth and leverage that to pay for other things, art programs, affordable housing, whatever. How do you cultivate wealth? Well, you cultivate it through taxation. So looking at that land, our estimate was 40,000 new jobs, 23,000 new dwelling units, and housing a population of 60,000 people. They're having a housing crisis, just like y'all. And that would yield $13 billion. And this is all low-market, mid-market stuff. It's not talking luxury housing. Yield $13 billion of taxable opportunity. That's the value of your entire city, that they have an opportunity to cultivate like that, because they own the land. So are there opportunities of land that your community could leverage? And talk to your cousins. You've got a county here that owns the real estate in the downtown. You've got the university, you've got the, you know, you may have federal property or state property. Where are you wasting real estate where you can have a cooperative development and cultivate your wealth that's currently non-taxable? That's another way of looking at it. You're going to have to move into new ways of thinking going forward here, but start with the basis of, we've got a spreadsheet that says, here's where we're gaining money, and here's where we're losing money. And here are our community needs that we've got to pay for stuff. We need a greenway, we need affordable housing, we need a solar program for our energy system. Whatever you feel like, as a community, that your needs need to be met, then you need to pay for it.
Okay. We're four minutes over, because I was enthralled. Okay, so I think that's it, unless you have any final closing word, words.
We've got two more shows. Tomorrow, I'm doing a presentation, and then it's the downtown group on, was it lunchtime at the, on Thursday, at the?
At the DAC.
DAC.
At the DAC, the downtown.
And thank you all for having us on this project. It's been a lot of fun.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Two more talks?
Yeah.
Got all my association.